I'll be going. I should be good.
Where's this?
I was going up to, uh, Man- Churchill Manitoba and try to look for polar bears.
Fun.
Yeah, could be good. Well, no, it's cold up there, yeah, it's cold up there, yeah. They're waiting, no, they're waiting for the ice to freeze in Hudson Bay.
Right.
The day it freezes, they disperse, but right now they're concentrated along the shore.
You know where to find them.
For a three or four week window, you gotta catch. Um, yeah, well, it will, it will, just, yeah. Uh, no, it was with a tour out of Colorado.
Just Doug and a big gun. And a bus with really big wheels.
Yeah, absolutely, thunderbuggies, yeah, yeah. I've actually done it before, many years ago, many years ago. It's, it's really a trip.
Let's just start, yeah.
Jeff, should we wait for Ann to come back in? Do you think, okay? Sure, if she would not feel included. Okay, we're going to open the meeting. Let's all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
Ann, Jeff offered to take role call. I'll go ahead. Commissioner Arkin?
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson? Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Chair Eisenman?
Here.
And Commissioner Pilch is absent this evening. Thank you. Uh, this is a time to open the, the microphone to anyone interested in addressing the commission on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here who would be interested in coming forward? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion and possible action on the general housing plan. How, how should we proceed? Is, would we move forward with the staff report first, or move right on to Mr. Miller? Okay, take the lead.
Okay, I see some writing, there it goes. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Barry Miller, consultant on the general plan update, including the housing element. Uh, as the commission knows, we've now had a series of, uh, public meetings on the housing element. And, uh, to recap, the housing element is a state mandated documented, uh, that the city is required to submit to the state every eight years. It includes our housing policies and a demonstration of how the city of Albany will, uh, meet its regional, its fair share of the region's, uh, housing needs. Uh, the city does not currently have a certified element and we're working to get a certified element, which will cover a period that's mostly behind us. Starts from 2007, ends at the end of 2014. Uh, we are late in getting this submitted and, uh, certified by the state, so we're moving quickly to, to, uh, get this in. And, right after this process is completed, we'll go back to the general plan update, which includes a new housing element that covers the period 2015 to 22. So we're hoping that some of the action items that, uh, can't make it into this element, because there simply is not that much time left in the planning period, uh, will make it into the next element. So, uh, there are six chapters in the housing element. At this point, the commission has had a study session on the needs assessment in May, the housing opportunity sites about a week ago. There was also, uh, a study session in September on the goals, policies and actions. And we held a community open house here on October 1st to get feedback on the portions of the document that had been drafted at that point. And again, a reminder that this is a process that actually started in 2008, that there were a number of study sessions that were held by the commission and the council. At that time, there was a community workshop at that time, there was a partial draft put together that was submitted to the state, but, uh, it did not include the goals, policies and programs. So that was the first order of business when we set, uh, out to finish this document. Uh, tonight, we're going to focus on the one chapter that you haven't commented on, at least in its current iteration, and that's the constraints analysis. The starting point for this document was the July 2009 draft, so this wasn't created from scratch. This was essentially taking a draft that the city had already done about four years ago, looking at the comments that the state had made on that document, and then updating it to, uh, reflect the state's comments. So it's really a second draft in many respects. Uh, I'm gonna walk through these slides pretty quickly and leave it to the commission for some discussion and conversation. I know we wanna have, uh, time for public comment as well. So there, there are two basic categories of constraints, yes, Commissioner Moss?
I was just gonna, would it take long to go through the, the, the statements by the state on our, our constraints last time? Or do you wanna do that at the end? I'm just curious what the state had to say about some of this stuff.
Okay, I can provide a recap at the end if that's, uh, if that's okay, yeah, I've got that memo somewhere here. To, to recap, there are two kinds of constraints that are identified, governmental and non-governmental. Uh, most of the emphasis is on the governmental constraints, these are things that the city has greater control over. Some of the non-governmental constraints relate to topics like the availability of credit and financing, uh, things that the city has less control over, but in some cases can do, uh, can be proactive. Uh, so the, the first area where the element, or where the chapter really focuses on our zoning, is on our zoning regulations. And there's a lot of detail in the chapter about the zoning regulations. Um, having been through this process with the state on a number of other housing elements, uh, they do like you to go into quite a bit of detail about your zoning regulations. And to look at all the possible ways that zoning can create a constraint to the production of housing, particularly higher density housing. Uh, we've talked about many of these things at our previous meetings, and not just meetings on the housing element. Uh, for example, the issue of the R1 minimum lot size being 3,750 square feet, uh, which creates a large number of non-conforming lots in the city that are smaller than that. Uh, a little bit of an inconsistency with the general plan category that allows a higher density than, uh, than the 3,750 square feet in that R1 zone. Uh, there's also an interesting, uh, issue with the floor area ratio in that R1 zone is .55, the lot coverage is 50%. What that tends to mean is that on those very small lots, it's, uh, a homeowner can reach that 50% before they reach that .55. And that creates an incentive, or almost in some cases a requirement, that if you wanna expand your home, you have to go up instead of out, because your, your floor area ratio is the total floor area that you can build on, uh, your lot versus lot coverage, which is structure coverage. A couple other, uh, issues here, and again, we'll come back to all of these in, in discussion. The R4 zone, uh, which is the highest density residential zone in the city, currently requires a use permit for multifamily. Uh, we have an action program to remedy that, uh, it's, it's kind of, um, not really logical that the highest density residential zone requires a use permit when the less dense, uh, R2 and R3 zones do not for multifamily. Uh, the limits on ground floor residential on San Pablo Avenue, this is something I think we're probably gonna need to have some more conversation about when we get into the general plan update of the land use element in particular. Uh, right now, you can't do housing on the ground floor on the San Pablo Avenue corridor, on, on the avenue itself. Uh, and as a result, you have, you know, a requirement for ground floor non-residential space. So, you know, is there really enough demand for all that space? Are there requirements that need to be clearer? Uh, might the city consider having a use permit process to allow residential uses on the ground floor and so forth? So, so that's an area that we wanna, uh, come back to, uh, through the general plan, but that, that's a potential constraint. Uh, the three-story height limit, which in, in a strange way is both a constraint and an opportunity. It's a constraint because three stories is, um, a fairly low limit when you look at the context of San Pablo Avenue along its entire length, uh, between Oakland and, and, uh, I guess Richmond, and points beyond Richmond even. Uh, but on the other hand, having that three-story height limit gives you an opportunity to offer a density bonus for four stories, uh, for someone who's including affordable housing in their unit. So, in some respects, it's, it's both an incentive and a constraint at the same time. Uh, another area is that there are no minimum densities in the zoning ordinance, so you could conceivably develop a commercial site with, um, you know, eight units or 12 units to the acre, or put very, very large units on the property, which are less likely to be affordable. Uh, we've talked about having a minimum density requirement, uh, as an, uh, an incentive to make the units smaller and more affordable. Continuing, there are a couple of other zoning provisions.
Jerry, one, one quick note on the previous slide.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when we are on smaller lots, the 2,500 square feet, the floor area ratio is .6, which
Okay.
only makes your example, you know, more pertinent.
Thanks, thanks for that clarification. So, a couple of additional zoning provisions, uh, the city has open space standards. Uh, we looked at how those standards compare with other cities in the, in the area, and they're, they're relatively, they're comparable. Uh, the, the 200 square foot requirement is comparable to, uh, to surrounding communities. Uh, we've, again, we've talked before and at previous meetings about the two space per unit parking requirement, uh, that makes it difficult to achieve the maximum FAR. It also is not necessarily, uh, necessary to have two spaces when you've got studios and one bedrooms. And so we've looked at, uh, the possibility of future ballot initiatives or other measures to, uh, to, to modify the parking standards. Again, that would come out of the general plan update. Uh, I pointed out this unintended potential incentive for affordable housing, because if you build affordable housing and, um, provide that, that additional density bonus, you actually are subject to a, a separate set of parking standards that the state imposes, which do allow you to do, or require you actually, to do only one space for a one-bedroom unit or a studio unit. So, you, you actually can't require the two spaces per unit, uh, under, under that circumstance based on state law for density bonuses. So there's an, a, a sort of a strange incentive to do affordable housing, uh, given that requirement.
Yeah, it also allows tandem parking, or encourages tandem parking on those two spaces.
Right.
As a benefit to our small lots, uh.
So, one of the things that the government code requires that we do in this, uh, analysis is look at standards for specific housing types. And I'll, I'll walk through these, uh, quickly. I think, you know, again, many of these things are things we've touched on before, since we've talked about the action programs already. Uh, emergency shelter by state law, it needs to be a permitted use in at least one zoning district in the city. It currently is not, it's a conditionally permitted use on the San Pablo Commercial Zone. But this, uh, there is an action program that would make it a permitted use in the, uh, commercial mixed-use or CMX zone. Transitional housing also needs to be permitted by right in this district. It's a little unclear in the current code where transitional housing is permitted. Uh, transitional and supportive housing, under state law, may not be subject to special standards. So you can't say, uh, if you have just, uh, other multifamily housing, you can build it this way, but if you build transitional housing, you have to build it this way. You've gotta apply a consistent standard. Allowances for single-room occupancy, uh, units, these are also called residential hotels in the, uh, San Pablo Commercial Zone. Again, state requirement that we allow that. Second units are currently not allowed in the, uh, multifamily zone in R2 and R3. Um, you can build a, uh, an additional unit, but what, what is, uh, legally characterized as a secondary unit, I probably should've written secondary unit, because it's a, it's a term of art, are only allowed in R1 at this point. Um, the process for approving a secondary unit is applied only in the R1 zone, which is different than building another unit onto, uh, you know, a, a single-family home to create a duplex, for example.
Is this condos, been making two units into condo conversions, is that?
No, it's not really condos, it's, uh, more if you are a single-family, uh, if you have a single-family home in the R2 district and you wanna build, um, a, a second, a secondary unit, an in-law apartment, that's actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not permitted under the current code. Uh, but if you wanna basically divide your house into a duplex, into two units, and you can meet the, uh, setback requirements and the, all the other zoning standards and provide the parking, you can do that. So it's a little bit of a, of a contradiction. Uh, it's harder to do that than to build a, a secondary unit in an R1 zone. So it's, it's a, it's kind of a convoluted, um, set of circumstances.
When we worked on the zoning ordinance some years ago, that was done deliberately because we, we wanted, the idea at the time, the discussions at the time were, um, we did not want to incentivize secondary residential units in R2 and R3, because we wanted the, uh, redevelopment of existing buildings in R2 and R3 to follow the zoning. And to be, we thought at the time, to be denser. Um, so, um, and I, I mean, I still think that that is a, is a, is a, is a good argument and, and, and a good, uh, a good way to go, but, uh, uh, we haven't seen many, much redevelopment in either R2 or R3, a little bit, not much. And, uh, we have seen pressure or requests for secondary residential units, so, so anyway, I'm torn on that one.
And it could be that if the parking standards were different, then it wouldn't be, it would be less of an issue? I think that's
True.
That's really
That's true. Parking standards are probably the, what, uh, well, but for secondary residence units now, you go by the, uh, you, the state requires, allows one or requires one, so, so. But for multifamily in R2 and R3, we still have our parking stand, our regular parking standard, yeah.
Uh, there are a couple of other items on here that are related to second units, um, and I'm gonna keep moving through this in the interest of time, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just, so, we have an R2 zone, we can build two units, if you build an inclusionary unit, it softens the parking requirement, so the benefit is that you're, you're, you are encouraging
Yeah.
inclusionary housing in those zones.
Yeah.
And that's, I guess
And I, and I, I think that that's, I think that's sort of a change in circumstances.
Right.
I don't believe that when, I mean, I can't remember, in 2005, I don't know when the state, uh, came out with its secondary housing, uh, uh, regulations that sort of trumped the city's, uh, parking requirements. I, I don't know if that had happened at, at that time or not, that might've changed the conversation.
And the rental part of this is just fairly new in the inclusionary housing before, mainly we talked about for sale units. And, and the density bonuses and your benefits and stuff.
Yeah.
So now we're kinda changing that game, so we didn't, we didn't address that at the time, because
I think so.
there were no rental units that were required to be in inclusionary housing.
Yeah.
Just to clarify too here, this is just related to secondary units, not include necessarily inclusionary units?
Exactly.
Okay. Uh, other potential governmental constraints, and the text of, uh, chapter five goes through each of these topic areas and describes what Albany's current requirements are relative to design review. It describes the inclusionary housing program, uh, makes the observation that there were a number of three and four unit projects that have come in since inclusionary housing was adopted. Uh, and very few five, six, seven, eight unit projects, uh, and could that be because the trigger for inclusionary housing is five units or more? Um, and if there was an in-lu fee for these smaller projects, might the city be able to either create a funding source for affordable housing, or, um, create additional inclusionary units within the city? So, there is a recommendation in the housing element to revisit the inclusionary housing ordinance in the next, uh, year or so to, to look at, uh, whether it's working and how it might be tightened up to, um, to achieve its, its intent. I see, I see puzzled looks.
No, and, no, I just took point of clarity, so that would be on a, someone developing a three or four unit project on a site that has a density overlay and a size that could support a five or six unit
Exactly.
and they're choosing to do the smaller project.
Right.
But if someone had a small site that, where the limit was three or four, that might not necessarily apply.
For, for example, the, um, it's on the 700 block of San Pablo Avenue, there are the, there's four townhouses, is that?
Solano.
Solano, yes, Solano, right, um, yes, thanks. And, uh, those are zoned R3, there could've been additional units built there, but they're four. So, why was it built as four and not more?
Would, I guess we'll get further in discuss, I'm sorry, we'll get further in discussion about the reduction and, and, uh, one of my questions earlier was gonna be, where's AB 1229 in this? Because that's where you can ask for money per unit, and it, it goes whether the city wants to actually have the housing built or become partners by requiring a fee to go in partnership with, uh, some other company to build it for them. So I think we need to come up with some clear direction on that. I don't know what happened to AB 1229, I keep looking and, I don't know what, where's that?
Okay, I don't have an answer for you on that specific question, but we do have language in the, uh, in the draft housing element about looking at the possibility of an impact fee at some point in the future, uh, for affordable housing, which I know other cities in the area do.
Yeah, and I, I would love to know if that, that's hurting them or helping them build units? Because in some states, LA, it's 100,000 or a little over 100,000 a unit. Uh, other places, it's 26,000 or less a unit, so, does that really stop the building of inclusionary housing and keep the density down?
And from the state of California's perspective, when they review the housing element, they will see that, they would see that as a constraint. Uh, which is kind of a, a strange, uh, twist, because you would think it was an opportunity by creating a funding source, but it also adds to the cost of the market rate units. Uh, so the, the other, uh, items that are discussed in this chapter, in this section, would include the density bonus requirements, uh, building code, there are a number of fire code requirements that Albany has that are a little bit unique, and some of those are being amended in the near future. Uh, processing and permitting, this is just a review of how the city processes development applications, the time it typically takes to get a subdivision, not so much a subdivision, but to get a building permit approved, uh, to get design review and so forth. There's a, a table listing all of the current fees in the city, and a, a short discussion of the art and public places fee. Uh, all of this provides the groundwork for policies that occur and programs that occur later on in chapter six of the element, which you've already reviewed, which we've talked about. Um, most of the content of this section was carried forward from the 2006 draft. Uh, we expanded it a little bit, again, as Commissioner Moss said, the state, uh, had various comments on the previous draft. We've tried to respond to all of those in, in this current draft. Uh, in terms of the, the non-governmental constraints, you can see them listed here. Uh, the infrastructure discussion looks at water and sewer services, it looks at the sewer replacement requirements for development. Uh, there's a discussion of environmental hazards, including, uh, previous hazardous materials on the sites, and I think this question came up last time. Uh, the, um, the tire, a Goodyear tire, did have a hazardous leaking, leaking tank at some time in the past, but it was completely remediated, so that's, that's actually, uh, been settled at this point already. I think that was the, the site that had come up in question last time. Uh, land costs and construction costs, obviously, were in the center of the Bay Area, those are very high here, that's a, that's an added, uh, burden to trying to build affordable housing. The availability of financing, um, again, the, the text of the chapter speaks to each of these topic areas, public opinion, looking at, um, some of the city's past experiences in building higher density or, or going to a four-story limit versus a three-story limit, and the, the genesis of our current height limits. Uh, to wrap up, I've got just a quick overview of next steps. Um, the plan right now is to bring this to the city council for discussion on the 21st of October. Uh, there'll be an opportunity for public comment at that meeting. Uh, if the council directs staff to do so, this document will be submitted to HCD at that point for 60 days, for their, well, it'll be submitted for review, they have up to 60 days to, uh, offer their comments back to the city. Our intent is to continue doing public outreach during that 60-day period and not to just stop and wait for 60 days. Uh, once we get the comments back from the state, there will be, uh, planning commission discussion of the comment letter. And, at some point, we will, uh, bring this to you in a public hearing for a recommendation to forward, uh, the, the draft housing element to the city council for their consideration. So there's another round to come of, of public hearings on this, once the document has incorporated the, the state's, uh, requested changes. And then the council would take action at that point. Uh, as I mentioned, once we get to that point, we'll be starting again. So, uh, we hope that we can build on this element and the next one, but we do see that there are maybe opportunities for additional actions and programs, uh, when we get to that point, given that this element really only covers to the end of 2014. The next element will cover eight years, from 2015 to 2022. And I'm happy to answer questions or take comments.
So during that 60-day, uh, period of time, what, what is the community outreach? What would that look like? Is that more study sessions, more, has it been discussed?
I can give you one example. Um, I've been, um, talking with representatives of the transition Albany and St. Albans Church about having, uh, an, an event at their, uh, at St. Albans to, to organize groups who are interested in affordable housing, get them up to speed to, with what we're working on, and, um, and garner some interest in, uh, supporting housing policies in the city. And that will probably, I, you know, potentially kicking around a date in the first week or two of November.
And the other question I had was, um, what do other cities do with emergency shelters? Do they run them themselves, such as Berkeley, or do they contract out to an agency that will handle it for them? As a city the size of Albany, how would, how would we handle something like that?
Nearly all cities that I'm familiar with, um, I'm not familiar with the larger cities, but the other smaller cities in, in Alameda County, they provide, the funding either comes from state and federal sources, or if there's some local funding, one way or the other, they contract out with nonprofits who actually operate the facility. Um, who have specialists in social services and healthcare and so forth to, to provide those services. And that's, that's how we would, we would propose to do that to, um, in moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
When you say on one of the last slide there that the work on the next housing element will begin immediately after this one. Refresh my memory if, if you can, or if you have a plan, like how was the, where does the next housing element fit in the overall process of the general plan update right now?
So the, the general plan update may, well, it may result in some policies that will allow us to accommodate additional housing in the future. There are some housing sites that are not listed, potential housing sites that are not listed here because they're kind of in play as part of the general plan update. So as a result of policies that come out of the general plan, we may, we'll have to re, you know, take another look at our site inventory. I, I think in the time, in terms of timing, it's actually a really good, the next cycle is a really good time to do a housing element because we are rethinking all of the land use and transportation policies at the same time. So it's, it's a better opportunity than where we are now. The obvious advantage is that you've got an eight year planning period and you're starting in the next cycle before the start of that period, before 2015. But part of the challenge of, of this housing element cycle is that the, the numbers weren't even available for local governments to start planning until 2008. So you're already a year into the planning period before people were getting started. The deadline was June 30th, 2009. So you are already, you know, two years into the period. So this is a much better position for the next cycle.
So one of the things I'm struggling with and I, like, it's more of a general question is in, when we talked about San Pablo Avenue, for instance, and residential on the ground floor. And as a goal, we had made a decision not to do, or not to have it because it makes dead zones in the commercial space. So when you have two items conflicting like that, the welfare of the city versus providing housing, I mean, how do you resolve something like that? I mean, it's, we found that when we allow residential on ground floors, it really creates a dead space in a commercial zone.
I mean, the one possibility is as you do on Solano Avenue, is a use permit process to, to do that. So you can consider it on a case by case basis, based on the merits of each project. And I think the other, you know, to have findings that you need to make before you approve a, a project that has ground floor residential. The other thing you could do is say ground floor residential is okay, but not on the entire corridor. You can identify certain parts of the corridor where you have to have ground floor retail. For example, the, the node at Solano and San Pablo, I don't think you want ground floor residential there. But on another part of the corridor, it may make sense. So you can, you can break it down.
And that's not considered spot zoning or?
No, not at all. In fact, that's what many cities do.
That's what zoning is.
Right.
What, what did you call it?
Well, spot zoning is if you pick one lot or two, one or two lots and say this, this is special, then you're specifically identifying.
We're doing more than just.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
I would just add to that, if I may, the, the, some of the retail that ends up being developed, ground floor retail is not the most viable retail. And in a way, it's pretty dead too. And I think through the general plan process, we can talk about making sure if we're, if it's going to have retail, that it really be good retail, that's marketable. And if not, let's do housing so at least there's, the land is productive use.
I mean, that's, it's a real concern that I've had and I've been watching the brick and mortar businesses struggling. And I, I know they're struggling on Solano and small shops and I think it's, it's, we're in a changing era where people buy things. And I, I think it, and I don't know what the answer is because I think we need, you know, a viable, we want to have viable and lively commercial streets. But the retail portion of it, local businesses, I mean, some are very successful, but it's, it's trending toward personal services and food, restaurants. But that's, that's law, that's strong and lively, but it's a tough one. I think it's a tough one, you know. I don't, I don't have an answer for sure.
I, I have thought about this a lot and I think the answer is that we do something like they do in older cities where you have the front door at the street or close to the streets, walk ups, walk downs. So that it's no longer just walled off. Like there, some of the places on Solano Avenue are now, they're just walled off to the street. But if you have porches and decks and stuff, it might, might encourage a more vibrant community than just having them walled off. So I think that's something you, right, we can look at in the use permit.
And I think higher density, like more, more mixed use, more housing along the resident, along the commercial corridors brings people who want to be very, very close to where they can buy those good and certain services, can walk to do it. I think that helps.
Good question as we discuss constraints this evening. So as we identify just constraints that we include in our housing element, we're not attempting to fix these before our housing element is approved. What we're doing is identifying the action items that we will work on through the rest of this period and into the next one.
With one exception, and that is the, the allowance for emergency shelter in the CMX, and that's a priority that will go.
Right. But some of them, you know, changing our parking ordinance, requiring a vote of the people.
Not going to happen in the next two months.
It has to go on an election cycle at a minimum. All right. And then.
But David, I think you hit it is that if we can tell people that there's, there's a benefit to putting inclusionary housing and it bypasses our parking requirements, that's a big benefit that we need to identify to people.
Right. That's a lack of constraint.
Right.
Or an opportunity. And then through some communication we've received, it's suggested that HCD may not approve what we're, if we submitted the, this housing element it's presented this evening. And I just wanted your opinion as someone who's prepared dozens of these, how are, how are we looking?
So in my experience working with, with four different cities in Alameda and Contra Costa County on this cycle, the comment letters have ranged from six pages to 16 pages. So when we get a letter, and these are the comments on an element that's already, that had been.
Comments back from.
That's right. As, as rigorous the processes we've gone through, they will still send us a letter that is quite long and detailed and asks for many edits and changes and additional information on particular topic areas. They, they're, I've not heard of a city that just goes straight in and gets their certification on, on their first try. They're, they're, they're pretty rigorous about their review.
And then, and then you make changes based on their review and it comes back to us?
Yeah. So it's really an iterative process. What typically happens is we get the comment, we talk to the state reviewer, we say, what exactly would you like us to do to address this particular comment? Draft some language, send it to them. They say, yeah, this looks okay. That then needs to be publicly vetted. So we would have to bring it to you or to the council before it becomes part of the, the draft. So there's, there's a, you know, complicated process that occurs with getting those changes vetted.
Do they, do they have the right to say things, you know, specific things like you must do this or before we certify?
Yes.
Must change the parking requirements, something like that.
They recognize, they recognize that there are certain things that can't be done within the timeframe that you have available. So they'll ask you to include a program that's as proactive as it can possibly be. I mean, they, they may want very aggressive language, but they, they also recognize that you can't, you know, change the city charter, for example, or overturn something that requires a ballot measure just by saying you're going to do it.
I, I think, you think that there's, we're going to get some respect from the, the fact that we're completing this one and then moving right into the next one, right away? I mean, are they going to, likely to have comments to say, well, as you're moving forward, do this in your, or we want to see, we want, we, in, in, we either want to see this or we want to see it in 2015.
Yeah, I, I think so to some extent. There are 100 other cities in the Bay Area that are also going to be submitting their housing elements at, at the end of next year. So we're going to be in the pack with everybody else at that point. At, at this point, we're not. We're sort of out there as an outlier.
Okay. Okay. So they'll put the entire staff on our.
No, they're busy with Southern California right now. They're actually reviewing more than 200 housing elements from the LA area right now.
Really?
Are there any other questions?
I got a bunch of notes for you. I don't know when you want them.
We'll tell you what, would you, would you like to, should we open?
Yeah.
Another public comment and, so.
If, if you would like to speak on this item, please feel free to fill out a speaker card at the back of the room and turn it in and we'll call your name. Our first speaker is Lauren Hanson.
Can I just ask a question? How many people are here to speak on this tonight? I would be willing to waive the three minute rule. And that's up to the chair though.
I would be willing to waive that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Hi Commissioners, my name is Lauren Hanson. I'm with the Public Interest Law Project. So again, thank you, especially thank you for tonight taking this special meeting to, to look at these chapters. We think it's really important and we're just happy to see that everyone again is offering thoughtful comments.
Can I interrupt? Can I, sorry, interrupt you for a second? You spoke last meeting and the meeting before, I think, as well. And after the last meeting, I was talking to staff and I, I was told that you're one of the litigants suing the city.
Yes.
And you didn't disclose that and that bothered me. And I, you know, I think we should know. I, I have no, I know nothing about the lawsuit. I haven't read it, I haven't seen it. I read about it in the local journal, which is not a source that I can treat, but I think that changes things. When, when litigants that have their own interests in mind come here and try to, and give us comments and suggestions. So I just want to say that for the record and I, it bothered me.
Sure. I, I apologize. It wasn't my intention to, to deceive the commission by any mean, means at all. I, when I spoke, I announced myself and, and said where I work and that I'm an attorney. And so I apologize if that didn't come through. I think that you should take a chance if you can to review the lawsuit. Just because it has a lot of the components of what we've been talking about at all these meetings in the lawsuit. So I think it would be helpful to take a look at it if you, if you can and we can certainly get that to you at some, somehow. It's also public record. Again, it's not our intention to deceive the commission. We have provided many comments, pages and pages of comments. And, you know, I think that the question that I think you asked about HCD is a good one. Because anything that, we're, we're telling you essentially what HCD is going to come back and say. And we are trying to incorporate all of these comments and try to fix some of these problems that we see before it gets to that stage so that the review process goes quicker. So that's what I would say to that point. Again, as we wrote in our letter, there's no reason why we need to rush this through within the next week or so. Putting it up at the next city council meeting is not going to make that much of a difference as compared to having it considered at the October 21st meeting. I do think the presentation today was a little bit surprising to me because they listed a lot of the different sections in the Chapter Five as potential constraints. But if you actually tick through those things in the chapter, he, they're not, there are actual statements that say this is not considered to be a constraint. And so I, I think that bears some more attention. I sort of listed out all of the sections in the letter that were actually posed as, they're, these sections were posed as no constraint whatsoever. So I was a little bit surprised by the presentation tonight. A couple of other things specifically, I think the, the, the section on public opinion does need to be beefed up. I think it underestimates the sort of sentiment in the community that's common in many communities in terms of NIMBYism. I would, I would encourage the commission and the city council to consider the alternative funding options that we mentioned in our letter, these boomerang funds that result out of the dissolution of redevelopment. I think that that's a really positive thing that the city could do and that would create sort of a long-term funding stream for affordable housing. And then finally, you know, Albany is a bit unique in this situation. And I think that Mr. Miller sort of hit it right on the head when he said this Albany is an outlier right now. And so I do think that this situation does need to be analyzed in this draft as a constraint. And so that we can go forward and not have this situation happen again where we, where we go for many years and not have a, an updated housing element. So I think that these difficulties that the city has faced should be analyzed as a constraint in the draft. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's all I ask.
Thank you. The next speaker is Anne Miley.
Hi, Anne Miley, Albany resident. I just have a few questions that I realize it's not really my role to ask, but I would appreciate you thinking about them. Because we're at a stage where a lot of things are being developed. First of all, I was wondering how many of the commissioners were unfamiliar with the lawsuit that's filed on the housing element? Sort of such a bedrock reason for this discussion that I would hope that you would be familiar with it frankly. And I've been struck by the specificity and the, and the instructiveness of the letters that have come from the, in the course of the lawsuit and the discussions that would seem to be directed to informing rapid progress on developing the housing element that Albany's so behind on. So, you know, it just seems very non-adversarial in many senses to me and very helpful in terms of moving this process forward at the speed that you're trying to move it forward now. I had two more questions. One is, is there a requirement that there be an RFP or something like that for the emergency shelter? In other words, do you have to put that out to bid? I, I just don't know. But it seems like that might be another time consideration in terms of getting this through quickly. And maybe it's exempt, but since that seems to be a governmental requirement at so many levels, it just seems worth considering. And finally, since we're now looking at affordable housing in the commercial corridor in a different light, at some point, it would be good to be able to figure out where the Safeway project is, whether it's dead in the water or whether that's another opportunity to move that into part of the planning for possible units to meet the requirements for the state numbers. So I'll hear from you maybe sometime in the future, but anyway, I just wanted to raise those for now. Thank you very much and thank you very much for your time and speed in considering all this.
The next speaker is Bob Outis.
Thank you, Commissioner Members. First of all, I also thank you for holding this session tonight. I think it was helpful in your own consideration of this and it certainly was useful to me to hear it. As indicated, my name is Bob Outis. I'm an Albany resident. I also happen to be a member, in the interest of full disclosure, I happen to be a member or an officer and director of the Albany Housing Advocates. But I speak solely for myself. Before I begin the specific comments, or the more general comments, I, I wanted to say that I think I ran across one statement in the, in the current draft that I believe unfortunately is inaccurate. And there are others I would dispute, but I think this one is just inaccurate. And that is that there, I looked, I sent an email to Mr. Bond on, at 3:12 in the afternoon on the day of the, of the last workshop after looking high and low on the website for an announcement of that meeting and it was not there. And I don't even think it appeared until after that meeting, although I didn't check. But other people had looked for it as well. And I'm sure it was an honest mistake or oversight and I know you're all overworked, but I don't believe it was there. In fact, I'm quite confident it was not. And then I'd like to say that I hope that none of my comments are taken either personally or as a suggestion of a lack of professionalism on the part of anyone here because I think you've done in some respects quite an amazing job. But as you know, I've had problems with the manner in which the city council has, in my view, assigned a very low priority to this process for a very long time. And I think if we're really honest about what's going on here, that we are considering a draft that's an attempt to rationalize 14 years of avoidance of the city's obligation to develop a proper and timely housing element. The draft document concedes as it must that the city made no attempt to obtain certification of a housing element for the 1999 to 2006 period. It then suggests that the failure to generate a complete draft of the housing. It then suggests that the failure to generate a complete draft of the housing element for the current period was due to staff cutbacks. But that does not tell the whole story. From 2007 to '10, the City Council caused the staff to spend many hours and threw at least $650,000 at a process called Voices Division, even though the outside consultant even concedes in a report that this was not a land use planning project. Rather, it was called a public engagement and ultimately a visioning process, but it bore little relevance to reality on the ground. It may have served a useful purpose in making people in the community feel good that they had a participatory role in a process, but it did not advance planning processes in any meaningful way. Worse, a review of the Voices Division report and the appendix shows that the visioning process for the Albany waterfront completely ignored. There is absolutely no mention of the obligation of the city to plan for housing, affordable or otherwise. So yes, public funds were depleted and staff cuts occurred, but that does not excuse the city's failure to heed its housing element obligations in a timely manner. And let's think about what housing element work did occur in the period from 2007 to the recent attempt to rationalize where we are today. A review of public documents shows at best a begrudging willingness on the part of the council to attack housing issues and a resulting failure to allocate needed resources to this effort. When the first housing element was passed on to the Housing and Community Development, our now Mayor Thompson commented that she felt the housing element requirements, and this is in the minutes of the council meeting, was an unrealistic state mandate that might impact the sense of community in Albany. At the following meeting, the council adopted without discussion a consent calendar item, which was a draft of a letter to the League of Women Voters, the League of Cities, continuing this refrain. So I do appreciate that Mr. Miller and staff understand the gravity of the council's avoidance of its obligations, but unfortunately, his words, written and oral, manifest the desire to paper over the problem and to push the housing element through this commission and past HCD without tackling the tougher problems that underlie housing issues in Albany. To do so, Mr. Miller postulates, for example, that well-established local banks, franchise restaurants, and car wash operations will abandon their facilities in the next few years and that their properties might then become available for housing. He consciously avoids discussion of future uses of the racetrack property. Indeed, it's hard to find a reference to that property. The draft simply reports that this property is not zoned for residential uses, even though it is far and away the single largest and most underutilized piece of property in the city. The racetrack owner, unlike the banks and the car wash owner and the franchise restaurant property owner, signals its desire to bail not long ago by throwing substantial resources at a failed beauty contest for a national laboratory. Sure, it's easy to say that the property is problematic and disfavored as a housing site because of the existence of Measure C and the negative sentiment expressed through an ill-informed Voices Division process, but isn't that what an honest discussion of housing constraints and the development of responsive goals, policies, and action programs are all about? We all know this to be true, but of course, we as a community seem unable to face that reality. So too, the report avoids discussion of housing at the Safeway site, even though that was included in the Safeway's first proposal a few years ago. To do so, it causes to face the reality of the NIMBYism that killed that proposal and that infects our discussions of housing for ourselves, our families, and those who might wish to live in an urban village by the bay that lives up to its self-proclaimed virtues. In closing, I submit that the question for you as Commissioners is whether you will aid and abet the game of papering over the city's longstanding and deeply ingrained avoidance of its housing element obligations, or whether you're willing to stand tall as Commission Members and say that you are not a part, you will not be a party to this game. It is, I realize that's a very tough choice, but the choice is very clear. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amber Whitson.
Hi, Amber Whitson, Albany resident. And since we're all in the spirit of full disclosure, I should mention that I am not only CFO of Albany's Housing Advocates, which is part of the lawsuit versus the city, but I'm also the same Amber Whitson that Albany Housing Advocates and Amber Whitson and Betty Stevenson versus City of Albany. I've been, I've been spending seemingly endless hours researching the antics of Albany's previous housing element attempts for nearly a year now, since before it was in the news. It was, it's always blown my mind, the mentions of homeless, the few mentions that there are in any discussions that Albany's had about their housing element. That's how I ended up finding out about the housing element not being quite so right, was because I was looking for any mention of homeless on the city website, because, you know, they got a Google search box and you can just put stuff in quotation marks and it finds you stuff with that word exactly in it. And if you do homeless in quotation marks minus task, so you're not finding stuff from the homeless task force, I'm sure there's probably more as of the past few months, but before May, practically nothing. And one of the few mentions was about homeless shelters and the fact that they're only allowed by conditional use permit in the San Pablo Commercial Zone, which blows my mind. And then it blew my mind even more when I found out that it's against state law. So it really, you know, every one of these planning and zoning meetings I have been to is just a breath of fresh air, because you guys are so much different than the City Council. You guys are like real people, people. And you guys really think that the things the City Council have kind of been shoving through and narrowing any way out of for years are pretty ridiculous, too, which is really, it's heartening. It's encouraging. It is. But yeah, I just wanted to, you know, since we're all full disclosing, I wanted to mention that and that I am pleased to see that you guys have suggestion to include the CMX District for a non-special permit and conditional use requiring homeless shelter district, because since we're all about to get evicted from out of there, it'd be nice to have somewhere other than the sidewalk. Just stay in Albany. And, because a lot of us don't, especially myself and my boyfriend, we really don't plan on going anywhere. I like the people in this town despite the City Council. And that is, that is heartening. I thought I had something else to ask about. Oh, it was about the homeless shelters thing. God damn it. Nope, just flew out of my mind again. Oh, well, either way, yeah. Full disclosure, and you guys rock. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Paul O'Curry.
Good evening, everybody. I also am a member of Albany Housing Advocates. I have a couple of different kinds of questions. A lot of the emphasis has been on what we're going to do with San Pablo and Solano Avenue. And my question is, there are places around town, for example, I don't know if the city could confirm this, but there is a house on Cornell, 1111 Cornell, that is falling apart, and I think it has been condemned. And there are quite a few of those places around town. And when we've talked about housing element before, we talked about, let's start looking at available spaces where we could put a duplex or a fourplex or something inside neighborhoods, so that it's not completely dominating one neighborhood, but that it would be spread around the town. So that's something I'd like you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Anyone else interested in addressing the Commission who has not filled out a speaker Well, thank you for your comments. We'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
Can I, staff, a question. Barry, there is housing at the racetrack, if I remember right. It's temporary housing for people that are either grooms or staying there. There's always, during race season, there's always mobile homes, that type of thing. I know that's probably in Berkeley. But the question I have is if, then there are some, I believe, some dormitory-type places out there or some rooms. I may be wrong, but it appeared there were. To find out if those are in use and if we couldn't use those to temporarily home, shelter the homeless that are out near there. I know we have an agreement with Berkeley to try to provide some housing, but I think it's probably would be considered somewhat substandard, but it's going to be better than, as a temporary fix, better than anything we can do in the short term.
I think I can respond to that. Yes, all the stables are, basically, the track is in Albany.
Right.
And the stables are in Berkeley. There is, there are people who live out there. I don't know whether the City of Berkeley considers those housing units or not. I do know, however, that it's a secure area.
Right.
Only the people who are supposed to be working with the horses are allowed in there.
Yeah.
So whether that would, a portion of that might become available, it would have to be separate from where the horses are, but it's certainly something. But that would then fall in the City of Berkeley's
Right.
...land use control and would have to
Just, yeah, because they had the stables and they had units above.
That's, that's what they're, there are certainly people living there, whether they count as units or not, I'm not sure.
But there was a reference to farm housing, and that would be considered, in my mind, similar to farm housing where it's temporary provisions for people working in the area.
Could I piggyback a question on top of that? So initially, I was, I was wondering about who runs the shelters, and it sounds like that's contracted out. But I was wondering if there are provisions for allowing cities to come together and run, you know, so we contract our plan checks to other cities. Is it something where we could immediately join with Berkeley or with one of our neighboring cities? And so that's, that's an interesting thought, even though it would be located in Berkeley. Is that an option for us?
It's an option that we've explored, and unfortunately, the other cities are in exactly the same place we are. And to our knowledge, at least, there isn't really any excess capacity, physical bed capacity, that's not being used for an extended period of time.
Or, I mean, is it, or are we legally obligated to have that space here in Albany? You know, I'm just curious what the, what the options are, you know, if we're looking for something immediate.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that what the city's legally obligated to do in terms of the state government code is to make the land available to provide the opportunity. It's, the city is not obligated to build or operate a shelter. It has to create that opportunity for nonprofits or the private sector or another entity and to cooperate in good spirit if that, if a proposal is made.
Okay, but we do have a precedent of sharing a fire chief with another city, and there may be a way of, you know, joining with a neighboring city that has a lot of operational expertise and, you know, share some of their staff.
That's absolutely under discussion right now
Yeah, I would expect it.
...with a couple in neighboring cities to, in order, if this housing element moves forward, there's a, I think, 36 action items that need to happen. And we're going to have to have some, some technical expertise to help us do that. And so, yes, we are in the process of exploring that right now.
So by my, the city's thinking about a part-time employee shared with another city to make him a full-time employee?
Yeah, ultimately, yes. That hasn't gone to the City Council yet, but that's internally administratively, that's what we're thinking through.
That's my, my thought.
So I interrupted you. Did you want to continue with your questions?
No, I just, the one was, it was whether the racetrack had the seasonal housing, not operating during the winter months, we could probably, have to see if we could rinse some of those rooms out or in some way facilitate locking it off. Because I don't, I don't know the racetrack at all. I don't know if they're full swing during the winter, their storage, what's happening, but it seemed like an opportune place with pre-built shelters to temporary use.
The, the track is actually operating more than it has in years, previous years, because of the closure of Bay Meadows and San Mateo.
Yeah.
So they have more race days now than they have in the recent history. I can't remember exactly the number, but it's, it's, I think, over 160 days. So the horses are there, basically.
They're during the winter, okay. I'm sorry. Well, it's an idea. And that was it. I just, I don't believe our city has a mechanism for imminent domain parcel like 1111 that's ranchakel, but it may be something that we might want to look at in the future. But we just don't have the money, and we need to get the money to try to, you know, we can't not take over private property without a reason and money to buy it. So that's, that's a sad fact right now.
And we did look at that. There are, from time to time, every year, there's one or two houses that are in that condition. We would have to pay fair market value. There are people who own it, and most of those homes are, believe it or not, being sold for $400,000 or $500,000, and they require a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work.
Yeah.
I guess just one, just one more follow-up, and this is going to be a general question. I have a lot of comments on our, some of our stuff, a lot of coverage of things like that. At some point, are we going to get into more particulars about this, or? Okay.
I think probably, maybe we should figure out how we're going to proceed. I have a question, too. So some of the comments we heard tonight are suggesting adding new potential sites. Safeway, we talked about that last time. Racetrack, we haven't really talked about that, but a big potential there. But the draft housing element we have in front of us, and I think I'm correct in this, it shows that we can meet our regional housing allocation. So what about adding sites? Does HCD, are they going to say, well, you, you haven't covered everything? Or are they going to, are they going to say, you know, based on public comments, you haven't covered everything? Or are they going to say, well, you, you meet it and it looks like the sites are viable? Or how do we deal with that? And we don't, this, the, in the final draft you have here, the Safeway site isn't added in. We talked about it at the last meeting. It hasn't been added in yet. It, I think we certainly can add it in. I'll support it, certainly in the next round when we do the next one. But what's the, what's the best way for us to proceed tonight?
So the
It's not like we're looking for more
Right.
...opportunity sites, it seems to me.
And, and, you know, you raise a good question. I would not attempt to second-guess what the reviewers will say at the state. I will say that the sites that are very similar to the sites that other jurisdictions in Alameda County have listed in their housing elements, that it's very unusual in a built-out city with the context of Albany to have a completely vacant large site that you can put housing on.
I think so.
So most of the sites, for example, I've worked on elements in Concord and San Leandro, most of their sites have something on them now. And yeah, maybe it's a fast food restaurant or a car wash or a gas station or some other
And they're viable
Right.
Profitable, presumably profitable businesses.
Yeah, in most cases, they are. And you're not guaranteed that they're going to be reused during the time period. I mean, that's, that's the reality on a lot of these. We look through the county assessor records to see, well, which of the sites that have the low improvement values, which of the sites have very low building relative to what the floor area ratio allowed by zoning are. So we have some metrics to try and figure out what are the best, what are the most opportune sites. This is pretty much the methodology that's used. There are a lot of complications, obviously, with putting the waterfront in as a potential housing site. I mean, not to mention that the fact that, again, a ballot measure would be required to have housing there. It could be looked at as a constraint.
Yeah.
But even at that point, it would be really more, you know, than, than it's, what are you going to do about that constraint? And it's a difficult answer.
Very difficult, no.
Right.
It's a very, very big issue. I will, you know, I do take notice that two or three generations ago, one of the projects on the waterfront did talk about housing down there, so. And, you know, it's also a severe liquefaction zone, there's geotechnical problems, it's a big, big, big issues, but.
Actually, before you go too far with that, part of that is rock, so there's not a lot of
Part of it is, yeah.
A lot, a lot, there's not going to be a lot of liquid factors.
Yeah.
Just throwing a general umbrella, no, there are very solid sites out there.
A lot of it's fill, a lot of it's fill. So it's very variable. In any event, okay, all right.
Regarding the Safeway site, just, just so the Commission's up to date, the Safeway, a couple of years ago, and you spent many hours reviewing a set of plans or an evolution of some plans for a large new store, they They have dropped that proposal because of the cost of the project and the complexity of it. So their, the most recent information we've received from them is a few months ago now, was that they intend to come back to the city to remodel the existing store.
Okay.
And I think in the next, in the overall general plan would be an appropriate place to explore, in the context of all the elements of the general plan, what should be the long-term future of that property.
Yeah.
And, you know, if Safeway were to decide not to remodel the store. But at the moment, I think that the near term, what we would expect to hear from them in the near term is just a remodel project.
I'd have to go back and look at the space behind Safeway, but in a remodel, the parking, I don't know if they're meeting the parking requirements that we would want or that they would want, but the space behind Safeway, would that be up for adding apartments?
Well, that was the, that was the proposal that they brought to the neighbors as a way of creating a buffer. And I should make the point, because it was noted in the letter as, you know, affordable housing and that the neighbors, you know, resisted affordable housing. The truth is that it was merely market rate housing. It wasn't specifically affordable housing that they were against. And I think Safeway saw it as an opportunity to realize more value, bring housing to the city and create a buffer. And that's what properties adjacent to the site resisted. And I think it is the typical thing that we hear for development of housing of any kind, or really any development of any kind, is that you're bringing more people, they're going to have more cars, they're going to have no parking pressure, more traffic. And those are really the primary arguments that we hear. Frankly, I don't hear a lot of resistance to affordable housing specifically. It's more generally, we don't want more people here of any kind, of any income level.
Yeah.
And I just want to point out, I'm not taking part in the discussion about Safeway because I have to recuse myself from any specific discussion on the project.
Right, I just wanted to clarify.
No, I know, I'm just pointing it out for.
A general.
All attorneys at home.
And, and you know, I think it's, it's fair to note that, you know, we cannot turn back the clock, but we can get this job done and that's really what we're here to do. And I think the record will support that this commission has been very supportive of development proposals that have come before us. And to my knowledge, we've never denied a housing project, at least while I've been here. We've pushed for more second units, we've included, you know, density bonus on a couple of projects or at least entertain them. You know, I think those didn't actually end up coming to a final vote, but I think we would have approved it based on, you know, our general disposition is towards being favorable, towards more housing, because we realize, and we've realized this for many years, that we have an obligation to meet and we are serious about doing that. That said, I want to say that, you know, this commission accepts responsibility for the fact that this isn't done. You know, there's a lot of, you know, staff has explained, you know, some of those reasons, but really it comes back to us and specifically Phil and Stacy and I, who have been here for a few years, to have gotten this job done and we didn't.
I assume full responsibility. No, I'm kidding.
But I also want to note that, you know, we have largely been reactionary. While we've approved projects, we've been relying on private developers to make these things happen.
Yeah.
And granted, the economy since 2007 has not been kind to developers. Developers tell us that, you know, I can't find comparable sales in order to get financing in order to, you know, realize a project here. So there are real hurdles, those are constraints, those are non-governmental constraints, they should be in our report of what these constraints are. But it's probably time for us to get proactive and time for us to get creative in how we can start to meet these housing obligations, in particular the very low income end of the scale where we have not realized units. Voices division was brought up and I want to note, observe that Voices division was not managed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. In fact, it was specifically steered away from this body. So while we would have said housing is a great thing and we have this large parcel we're talking about, that would be a great place to do housing, we never had that opportunity other than the same opportunity that the other citizens did. And some citizens said that, but a vast majority of them apparently didn't. All right, I do have a lot of detailed notes.
Before you get into detail, I want to mention that, I know I have and I believe David has talked to housing developers. And one of the things that we find is that the cost of land here is so high and the lots are so small, it's hard to encourage them to come into Albany. In fact, most of them say, I can't make it work. I know we'd like to believe that the developers like this will, will do these at a loss, but they, they can't do it at a loss. They do have to have operating costs on a property like inclusionary housing or low-income housing. So I think that we have been struggling to identify how we can get this type of projects or into Albany. I'm not sure I've ever, a couple of minor instances, I've heard some complaints, but most of the time I've never heard anybody complain about the type of housing that comes in. Most of the time it's too big, too large and too bulky. But I think what we, we need to study is that how, and I know that, and you're part of this, the legal team that's suing the city of Albany, bring us people. I mean, don't just cause problems, bring us solutions. Bring us people you've worked with, developers or, you know, everybody's a solution to this problem if they can help us find a way to bring in housing. And all of us are out there trying to figure this out and we just have a shorter reach and we just need broader reaches here to bring in more people to find out how we can develop this housing and make it work for developers. Because I've done a lot of multifamily housing and I know how they think. And, you know, it's cost per square foot, per lot, per unit and rents, returns, things like this, and if I don't make a profit, they're not going to put their money at risk. So if we can find some way to get more nonprofits in here, great, I would love to do it. But again, a nonprofit doesn't mean lost profit. They just have to be somehow feasible to build these. And that's the problem is, so one of the things I'm going to suggest tonight is that if we can convince people to merge their lots, we actually, if they merge it, raise the density allowed above what the zoning would allow, just to encourage this type of merger. Because we got to find a way to make bigger lots in Albany and the only way to do it is by merging.
Yeah, I've talked to nonprofit housing developers and they look at Albany and they say, well, you know, for the cost of the land and for the size of the parcels that I can get there, I can do it for much less money and create far more housing opportunities in Berkeley or Oakland or El Cerrito or other places. And that's why they're not building here. So we have to find a way to overcome that particular hurdle, which is probably to get more aggressive about land acquisition and then make those sites, you know, available at a price that's comparable to what they might pay somewhere else. Just a couple more reactions to things that I heard through the public comment, you know, the development of houses that have been condemned. You know, we currently do allow in all of our zoning districts, or at least in R1, a boarding house, which is basically the owner of a house rents out rooms. And in fact, I, I know that this is being done around town. I don't know if the census data accounts for that or not, but I know, you know, we've rented a room in our home to, you know, various young people, you know, friends of friends or even, you know, someone who came to us who wasn't known to us. And so it's, it's done, it's what people do. And it's a great source of affordable housing. There was the discussion of ground floor retail on San Pablo Avenue. And I think it's, I think the idea of allowing that by use permit is appropriate for us. I don't want to do it, you know, by right, right out of the gate, because I think we are, we had a good discussion earlier, the conflicting.
Residential on the ground floor?
Residential on the ground floor, yes. Because I think we need to find balance in our streets and there are long stretches of Solano Avenue in particular where apartment building after apartment building after apartment building and we create a dead zone in those areas. So a balance, you know, looking at the specifics. And that's what a use permit allows us to do, is exactly that. Okay, I have a long list of comments based on the draft that we received.
Are you looking at just chapter five or the whole thing?
Just chapter five. I want to talk about constraints. I think that's our primary focus here. We can talk about action items or anything else really, because we're passing the, we may, we may take action to pass the whole document to the city council. So I think our direction here is to have staff make any final edits. Starting with the idea of 2,500 square foot lots and I would add to that the possibility of a zero lot line option, which might make the development of a 5,000 square foot lot that has a lower value existing structure on it more developable if you can do it as a duplex, but actually subdivide it and sell it as separate parcels with separate units on it. So I wanted to add that for consideration.
I'm sorry, a zero lot line option for 5,000 square foot lots? I'm sorry, or for two 2,500 beside each other?
That they could be two 2,500s.
Beside each other?
Side by side. And in fact, if you go down Keynes Avenue, you'll see these.
No.
They exist and they look like a big house, but they're actually two separate houses.
Exactly that.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a.
It works, works quite well.
It's a recognized way of getting some efficiency and not losing, you know, a lot of land area in an urban environment to side yard setbacks that could be a common wall.
I think, yeah, if we just allow it, then it's by right, then you don't have to do anything, it doesn't have to be a condominium, it doesn't have to, you know, just recognize that the fire rating between the two are fine and you're good.
Right. But we don't do that now.
Yeah, and that's another one of those sentences about merging properties.
There was a good discussion in the constraints document, I'll just reference it around page 5.4 regarding lot consolidation. And I think it's been discussed by a number of us how smaller parcels are difficult to develop and yet we have this graduated zoning that allows, you know, full density on the bigger parcels, but doesn't, you know, allow it on the smaller ones. Now granted, there are other constraints, there are other limits that make it difficult to reach those higher densities, but I've always wondered, you know, if someone can be creative about how they, you know, bundle units on these smaller parcels, they can have a higher number of units and if they get a density bonus, you know, to reduce their parking, you know, that could actually make a project work. So I wanted to mention that as a potential constraint to list. On 5.7, you know, we, just an observation that this is San Pablo commercial, that we have a .95 floor area ratio for commercial only, but we jumped that up to 2.25 for mixed use. That seems to me an incentive that we're looking to see a mix of uses presumably housing and certainly a good one. I have to ask, now we're on page 5.9, is the daylight plane a disincentive? Are we running up against either a more expensive type of construction or just limiting the volume that's allowed with our daylight planes? I'm not saying we should do away with them, I'm just asking the question. And there was also a discussion of nodes there. We sort of have similar limitations on what types of things can, can't happen in a node, but we don't seem to have any incentives that might make those more attractive for development. I mentioned that last time. Question for the rest of us here. For open space, we do require open spaces with multifamily housing. Do the, does the roof area count as an open space? Can one have open space? I think we did that on Cornell, I just wanted to discuss that publicly. It, I've mentioned this before, but it's here in the constraints, page 5.13. I think we could add more residential as an allowed use in more districts with a use permit, but I think we should be open to it. You know, on a dense urban environment, we're already talking the potential for emergency or transitional housing in the CMX district. We do allow live-work. I think we could be open to other residential types in that district and really all the districts. And again, by use permit, so there's a public discussion of the merits or reasons not to propose such a thing. Second units are something that I've been a proponent of for a long time here and I would love to see more, or I should say, less constraints and more incentives to allow these. They should be allowed in all districts. We should follow the, I mentioned this last time, the setbacks for accessory buildings, apply those to accessory units. Barry had a slide that mentioned exceeding the 12-foot height limit. That would allow someone to go to two stories or at least a story and a half. And in our, again, small lots, giving up a lot of space for a second unit, a lot of yard area is a difficult thing to ask. So actually allowing one to go to a second story, preserving that yard space, open space could help. Another one that was shown in the slide, but not specifically discussed, is allowing tandem parking for the primary unit and the secondary unit. I think that would open up a lot of opportunities if we made that the rule. And I don't think we'd be in violation of Measure D by doing so, it would just be this body deciding that, yes, that's going to be okay. Two people who share a lot can figure out how to park their cars. All right. I noted in page 5.16, the discussion of a shelter, I agree with the ability to be able to have multiple sites in a smaller unit, smaller developments on those sites. I wonder as we make it a by right in the CMX district, if we don't want to be open to approving these under a use permit in other districts. We have a small town and a small number of parcels that these might work on, so I'm inclined to be more open to, you know, other locations. I think this is something Mr. McCurry brought up, oh, Curry. There was a recommendation, this is still on 16, for single-room occupancy as a category and I think that's okay and similarly, it should be in a variety of districts. And I would support changing the language from homeless to transitional and supportive housing, if I understand that's what you're suggesting we do. Page 21, this was a good discussion and you brought this up, Mr. Miller brought this up in his introduction, that where five units or more are allowed on a site and someone chooses to develop less than that, for any reason, that the difference, the balance of units not developed should be subject to an in-loo fee that we can then put towards development of affordable housing. I don't know if we can waive school impact fees for affordable housing units, but currently for at least larger units, they're fairly substantial, those fees. I do note that for under 500 square feet, there's no fee. So there could be some incentive right there to, for people to develop smaller units, but it's worth exploring. And just a couple of questions that came out of the legal aid letter that we received this afternoon. You know, we talk about the potential constraints, but can we include in that ideas for how we can incentivize? And maybe this is more the, you know, a matter of semantics than it is one of anything, but I think, you know, given the lack of development that we see, we need to spin this around and actually find ways of attracting developers to start to build housing. We, you know, our numbers look good thanks to UC Village being redeveloped, but the truth is the next round is going to be really difficult if we don't start to find ways to make these things happen. And then I just would like some clarity on the discussion in the legal aid letter regarding the redevelopment funding. regarding the redevelopment funding that was, you know, taken by the state when they took away redevelopment agencies. Was the $700,000 figure cited earmarked specifically for affordable housing? Or is that just what we had in our redevelopment fund that could have gone to whatever we might have been wanting to develop, which my understanding for that zone was more highway commercial?
The, the, the state took both, but the $700,000 or so, I thought it was a little bit lower than that. But anyhow, whatever the number was, it was specifically for low and moderate income housing.
It was? Okay, thank you.
It was a lot.
So this, the boomerang effect that's discussed is, you know, the income that's now coming to the city, which we could specifically begin to build such a fund again?
Yes, and that again is another idea that we're taking seriously and looking into.
Yeah, and I would think that would fall on the side of, you know, creating an incentive as opposed to removing a constraint. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Does everyone?
I, well, yeah, I, I want to say I applaud David's comments, and I think that they're really well thought out. And some of them might be a stretch for me, but by and large, I really think they're, that they're very thoughtful and provide a lot of good ideas. And I appreciate the, the thought you put into this. And I probably, probably have very little I can add or I can't, you know, very little to add. I support them. And certainly, when I read it, my notes weren't, weren't as thorough or as creative as what you came up with from, from reading this, so. I, I don't think I have much more to add. I was interested in, in the, in the funding issue, the boomerang, the boomerang funding coming back that was discussed in the legal aid, in the legal aid letter. I know that, we know nothing about that as, we're not budget people for the state of Albany, but I'm assuming that the city council is aware of that. And I, I would like to, you know, urge the council to, to look at that and to look at trying to, trying to recapture some of that funding. But I don't have any, any way of knowing what the context was. And I know that the state took away huge amounts of money from us in the last couple of years and that, you know, all the cities, including us, really suffered from that. So I'm sure budgeting is a difficult issue. But I would like to see some of that money that does come back now go to affordable and moderate income housing. So I was, one of my notes was, I was a little bit surprised to realize I'd forgotten, I guess, about the node, that the nodes in our current general plan and in the zoning, it's according to what Barry's written in here, basically focus on a pedestrian orientation, a ground-level focus in those points, and not on, not on taller buildings or denser development at those locations, which was frankly, reading that, that frankly went against the way that I kind of remembered it. And in my, anyway, my vision of it, from going way back to the nodes, was that the nodes in, in planning context would be areas of denser development, more than just the ground level. So, so it, it might be that, you know, I, looking at the oncoming, the coming general plan policies, I, I would like to take a little closer look at the nodes and, and see, not only do we want to create, you know, good pedestrian-oriented kinds of activities there, but, but potentially incentives for taller buildings, denser development in the node areas. And that, I think that was about, that's all, about all I had to add. I appreciate David, your, your thoughts were really, really good on, on this, so. I also want to say, I appreciate the staff putting together the comment, the summary of comments that we made on the September 25 meet, meeting. I think you did a good job on that. And that certainly, I looked closely at the commissioners' comments to, my way of thinking, you put them down very carefully. And, and I think that if this goes on to the city council, that if the, the draft housing element goes on to the city council, that these comments from the commission could go along with it for, just as a, as an additional, additional recital of what the commission is thinking.
I don't have anything further right now.
I have a quick question for you. In the process of the housing element, when we talk about our site regulations, do we say we're modifying them, or do we have to modify them now?
What we say is we'll modify them during the next roughly year and a half.
Okay, because I'm looking at table 5.1 and saying things like, R1 should, the density should go up to 17 units per acre. That brings, what I'm looking at is at 2,500 square foot instead of 3,750, bringing that down. And there's a number of areas in this chart, I think, that we can look at to increase some density and some lot coverage. And especially in the RHD zone, I think we need to look at, it needs to be more in line with the rest of our residential zone. You know, we talk about 55% lot coverage versus 50 in that zone. We talk at minimum lot per unit of 4,840 square feet. And we need to bring that better, more in line. And I, and I agree, I think that we need to talk about some zero lot lines, even if, if the two owners can come together and say, this is what we agree to, and not necessarily have to merge the lots to allow that, as long as the other person at the adjacent property agrees with the zero lot line.
Kind of do it as a condominium thing?
No, no, it's just separate parcels already. You don't want to join them. They'll be separate parcels, separate owners that can build the zero lot line if they can agree. So that'll allow some, some more density and such like that. So there's a number of...
There's an example of that in, in San Francisco.
Oh, there's a great example in Albany. We, we have one right near the middle school. That's, is a bunch of zero outline, townhomes that have been there since, it looks like 40, 50 years, maybe longer. In that little court, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's a good example, I think.
That's right.
A nice density and such. So I think we need to go back and look at our zoning on lot density, lot setbacks and such. And I think that can be done pretty easily. And I don't think we have to itemize it tonight.
These are all, you're talking about zoning regulations.
That's what I'm saying.
Zoning code revisions.
When, when we do this to encourage more housing.
Yeah, but we need to do the general plan first.
Right, well, it all has to be, yeah, it all has to be together.
So that, those sorts of ideas might be more appropriate for the next round.
Well, that's what I'm saying. At this point, we're going to say we're going to do this in the next year and a half.
And just to clarify, there are, there are two, really, as, as the commission is observing, there's two tiers of changes. There are tiers, there are three if you count the CMX, the homeless shelter changes that are going to be, you know, forthcoming. But there's, there's one tier related to what's in this document in the, in chapter six, where it says specifically, make these zoning changes. And then there's another round that'll come after the general plan's adopted, during the next housing element cycle. Those which would affect things like building height, for example, which would have a SEQA impact that will require, you know, some coverage in the EIR for the general plan, would be difficult to do now.
And to go on, I really, I love the idea about the minimum, minimum density of residential units per development. And I think that that would be great. And if we take it a little bit further, some incentives for a little bit higher density. And with that, though, we never give up the idea of good design gets better densities. Offer more amenities, you get better densities. And part of those amenities would be inclusionary or transitional housing. So one of the other things, we, we talk a lot about secondary residential units. And I think there should be some way to incentivize either building a second residential unit inside the legal setbacks as in a joint building, rather than a freestanding separate unit or separate building. We never really identify that, where we can say, you can have a, extend your house, put another unit right against it, keeping the setbacks. We should be incentivizing that, because all we're doing is keeping the backyards open, keep some of the open space still open and not building in those setback areas. So it's a second unit that stays within the legal setbacks.
And that's the way our code is written now?
Yeah, we still allow in the 20% back corner of the property within five feet or three feet of, you know...
It applies the side yard setback to the rear, right?
Right, I'm saying, let's try to encourage keeping the setbacks and having the units attached to the structure. Either, you know, attached to the back of the structure where there's more backyard, that it still stays within the setbacks. Then we still keep our setback open space requirements. It's kind of a nice incentive to allow that. And I know I'm getting particular again about these requirements, but these are rattling around a little bit. The public arts, and I know it discusses it here, but I think that if somebody's providing inclusionary housing, we should reduce or zero out the, the public arts requirement. That's, that can be a big hit on a larger property, so they can offset some of their costs to build inclusionary housing with the arts. I know this is not a real popular idea, but I think that we need to look at how we're going to fund some of this stuff.
Well, if I may, ask a question. Are we not creating an arts fund through other projects that choose not to develop it?
That's what's happened so far, yes. That instead of putting the public art in, the, the applicants are choosing to, to pay the, the in-loo fee. The UC Village project will be an exception. They're going to have specific proposals for public art in that project.
Build their own.
Right.
Yeah, but I could say that these projects, if you are developing an inclusionary housing unit or several, could be a recipient of some of the funds that have been built up.
Exactly.
If they wanted to include, right, they can, the fund would pay for the public art that's part of the project.
Right.
So, yeah, that's one thing we haven't looked at. I know it's mentioned in the...
I'd have to discuss that, I'm not sure I could, you know, I'm open to the concept, but I'm not sure I could vote for it in the end.
Well, I understand, but it's, it's great to have arts, but it's also nice to have housing. And we tend to fall down on our housing requirements. So I'm always looking for a way to, how do we fund these things? And that, you know, you're talking about, what, $4,000, $5,000 on a $300,000 build? I think that that's substantial. When you start talking about a million dollar, a million two, or a million three, that's a lot of money for an arts. And so if we can encourage some of that money to come back to housing, because we need, we need to fund housing. So that's what I'm looking at. And it may be something that doesn't go farther than my lips to this microphone, but I had to say it. So, yeah, those, those are some of my comments. You mentioned, Barry, the Omni Fire Code is hurting some housing. And I wasn't clear on that. Well, I know, the sprinkler, but is there something else that...
Our, at, at the moment, we're, I'm working with the fire chief right now this week to refine our code requirements beginning next year. But at the moment, for certain larger home additions, we require essentially a commercial-grade fire alarm system in homes. And we have a new fire chief, and his philosophy is a little bit different, that we can manage and respond to alarms with residential grade.
With a 13D type, yeah, okay. I didn't realize we, on larger, larger additions, it's kind of commercial.
Yeah, and then our, our code has adopted a series that actually has adopted basically every fire code that exists, which is a little bit overstepping, I guess, would be the perspective that we have now, that in beginning 2014, we're going to apply that California fire code as it stands and not in, in FBA, National Fire Protection. Yeah. And so that's just a little bit simpler. It's something that people are more familiar with, it gives them more certainty when they call up. We don't have to spend a lot of time to explain what's going on. We just say it's sustained and stuff.
Right. January 1st?
That's January 1st.
And one of the final paragraphs, I think, in that, the fire code is, at the discretion of the fire marshal, he can increase or decrease the requirements. So...
I think we have a strong commitment to public safety, but there are ways to do it more cost-effective.
Exactly, exactly.
We're on that, we're on board with that.
Exactly, okay. And that's pretty much my comments. I think that my thoughts on the waterfront will stay my thoughts on the waterfront. But I think that we have made great strides here. I think this commission is, is making some great suggestions. And I think that we now need to get over this next hurdle. And I, I know that this, I'm not rushing this whole process. I'm just very anxious and interested in it, and I don't want the momentum to stop. And that's why I really wanted to keep going with this. There is no other incentive other than that I want to see this wrapped up and so we can have something we can be proud of and start working with.
So I really appreciate the thoughtful comments of the, my fellow commissioners. And it's always interesting to me how we can read the same document and pull out such, we all come away with different points. So, so two things that Commissioner Arkin mentioned kind of struck with me, stuck with me. And so I went back and looked at the fees and, and the park dedication fee that says it's required for subdivisions only. Is that an exorbitant fee? Where does that, where does that land? When, if, if we are interested in subdividing lots, how...
Our park fee is quite low compared to a lot of other communities. There's this formula that comes out of state law, it's called the Quimby Act. And basically, that's what we apply. Many cities who have more aggressive park development programs have higher fees. So I wouldn't see that as...
You wouldn't see that, okay.
As a hurdle to...
But I would agree with a public art fee. And, and I'm wondering if there is a way to kind of package a project so that the fees could be a little bit less? I don't know if there would be a way of working with the city in a more efficient manner. And I don't, probably not. But discounting the, the fees for projects that would qualify. The second thing that, that was interesting to me is, is I don't have the opportunity to work with nonprofit developers. And so that was interesting information, that Albany is really expensive, and so they, they can't buy the land here. So it makes sense to me that, that we don't look to developers then, that maybe we look to the people who are already living here, people who already own the land, who've been sitting on it for a while, that have the money to build that second unit. It seems like that might be the model that we really embrace, that that should be our focus, and making it easier to do the second unit. And, and I would argue it could be attached to the house or in the, the back left corner of the property. I think either way is viable. And, and that it seems to me that, that having a fleet of secondary units spread around Albany is more equitable too, within, within the neighborhoods. It just seems more friendly, more, you know, connected to other families. It just seems like that maybe that could be Albany's model.
Are you familiar with Santa Cruz and their secondary?
No, I'm not.
Oh, my goodness, it's, it's, I think it's recognized nationwide as one of the best and most effective in actually creating housing. We designed a home there and had to design it with a garage. But before construction even began, we could convert the garage to a second unit.
Yes.
And we did.
Well, so, so in the, carrying that idea further, I mean, the tandem parking would have to be a necessity. I would even go beyond that and say, I would be willing to make an extreme compact parking space for one of the, you know, for a smart car, a Fiat, or, you know, and, and in the day of these compact cars, that the second spot could actually be like a micro, micro spot.
Actually, that's what we, again, we talked about, you know, Measure D only requires a number of spaces. We actually set the size of the space. So we could actually reduce the second space to a compact size. the second space to a compact size.
I know there are other cities that allow compact spaces that are smaller than what Albany does, at least for one spot, that, that would make sense. Um, sorry, I'm running through my notes here. Um, I, coming back to Safeway, if they're looking to remodel, this is, this might be an opportunity to try to slip in a few units behind and underneath. I don't, you know, is there an opportunity here to have that dialogue with them now? And, and it could be, you know, studio apartments. It could be more little one-bedroom units. I, I don't know. If there's an opportunity, then maybe we should, we grab hold of it now, um, before they get too far along in their, in their, um, design. Um, it's interesting that the, that we're only allowed to put one pre-manufactured home on a lot. And when there's so many, um, great companies that are really testing that or prefabricated homes, it, it seems limiting that, that we might want to allow a really well-designed system. And it, it could even be that it's pre-manufactured apartment buildings, you know, that are pre-assembled and, and kind of linked in, in place. But thoughtful, well-designed, but, but it, pre-manufactured seems limiting. Um, and I, I'm curious about if we, if we start allowing more secondary units with the fire protection rules for, for those, if, if the, the primary home is required to have, you know, full-blown sprinkler, excuse me, sprinkler system, the secondary unit, if it's out, if it's, you know, at the back corner lot, it's not connected to the building, the main house, would it also be required?
It's a, it's a limit of 1,500 square feet, so whether new construction or remodel, if it's smaller than 1,500 square feet, no sprinkler system is required.
So if a second, so if, if a house is being remodeled, it's adding more than, it, it triggers the, the, the square footage, but at the same time, they're adding a second unit out where the garage used to be, would they be required to also sprinkler that even though it wasn't connected?
If it's a separate unit, no.
That's, that's correct. This came up in the last few weeks, someone exploring a second unit, and the question came up. And, and, yeah, the, the primary residence either has sprinklers or will be having sprinklers. And no, we're not going to require the second unit to have sprinklers.
That seems reasonable. Um, so, th- those are all the comments that I had. And, and I don't know if anyone else?
Yeah, I had one more. It's, it's more off topic, and it's something that I've mentioned to you guys before, um, to staff. And that is, we have to stop at flat rate applications and take a deposit and work against that deposit. And if it's a project that's more, uh, complex, then the city, uh, ends up losing money on it as opposed to having a fee base. So that, uh-
Are you, are you speaking of at the planning submittal or at the building planning?
The planning submittal, a project, we have a set fee for the projects. It could be a simple project or it could be a really complex project. And most, or a lot of cities are going to, taking a deposit, and the staff works against that deposit, depending on how complex it is. If staff runs out of money, they go back to the applicant and say, we need more money to cover the complexity of this project. So we no longer are on the ropes for projects that are lost leaders. And with more of this type of, uh, complicated applications, we're going to be looking at having to raise the fees or, or do it on hourly. And I think that it's better to do it on hourly. So I would, I would encourage going to city council, and I know next budget round, and, and showing that a number of cities do it this way, and it is successful, because then you're a funded department as opposed to a partially funded, a funded department.
I see. The only question is, does that then become a potential constraint, or the perception of that, if someone knows that a project is going to require, um, several rounds of planning hearings or something?
But if you, you provide inclusionary housing, we can adjust that.
Okay.
So that becomes an incentive, um, for projects.
Yeah. I have, I have personal experience with that. In Maraga, that's how I get paid for the work I've done there.
Yeah.
And, uh, one project I worked on was appealed to the city council, and planning director said to the applicant, they had to bring in more money to pay Donaldson for the extra work. Uh, so that was part of it. Um, so, anyway.
Well, I think it's fair-
So I know that is done. And it allows, it allows, in that case, it allows the staff to also hire an outside consultant like me and, uh, keep the project moving. So that's what happened there.
And it could be an incentive to expedite the planning review or the planning reports and such, an application-
View.
More quickly. And I know a lot of cities are doing that.
Yeah.
You can hire an outside to write the-
Yeah.
-reports and-
No, I work in, I work in Berkeley that way, too, as an expedited contractor. So, but that, you know, that requires additional fees upfront. And it, it definitely increases the cost of the application a lot.
So using the, the draft housing element as the tool, we have a program for H that's going to be fee incentives for affordable housing. And by next spring, assuming this is approved, we'll be responsible for bringing back to you, um, a proposal to, to address the fee issue.
The fees, uh huh.
And so you can-
Good.
Stay tuned.
I had a couple, a couple of little things that came up from, at least one here that came up from Stacey's comments. Um, I think you were talking about, uh, second units. And I remember, is that, if I recall correctly, there's talking here about a moratorium, a moratorium period on, uh, on possible second units that are not legalized right now. In, is it, am I, is that in here? Did I read that somewhere else?
It's not a moratorium amnesty.
An amnesty, an amnesty, amnesty. That's the wrong, I'm sorry, wrong word. Amnesty. Um, and I, I wanted to say, I think that's a good idea. And I think we do have, uh, second units around town that are providing affordable housing. Um, and we know that we don't know about. Um, but I also think that the timing for that amnesty could, could be important here if, uh, if we're talking about changing some of the requirements for, about making it easier to have, to build secondary residential units. Then the amnesty should occur after we've loosened the requirements. So we, we have, uh, we, we have more, uh, units come in that will, we can say conform.
Right. And it could be then an educational opportunity.
Mm-hmm.
And I recall the idea that Barry mentioned that Piedmont implements where if one is unable to develop a second unit within all of the zoning constraints that exist on their lot, they may be able to get a, a dispensation to build that unit anyways if they commit to making it an affordable unit. And that's a novel and creative idea that we ought to also consider.
Finally, I, I, a little bit, uh, Safeway, Phil, I'll bring it up. Another question. An early proposal on Safeway, many years ago, I think it was when I was on the commission at that time. Um, it never, I don't think I ever made it to an application level, but there was talk about it. Had an intriguing concept, and it had housing in the, in the store, in the, on the development. It had housing in the development. And at the time, the developer was, was saying, I think he said to the commission, um, and the goal here is that this would be the, a couple of these units, four of these units, or two of these units, something like that, would be affordable to our, our checkers. Our Safeway was, the idea was that they were going to gear these units to be affordable to the people that they employed in the store. And I thought that was a, I just remembered that. And that was an intriguing idea. Um, and I, 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 I liked that idea, and I'm still carrying it forward. And, um, I don't know how it could be written out, but it certainly could be some sort of incentive in a mixed use, in a mixed use development, anyway.
So we've bantered about a number of ideas, um, with some, um, agreement amongst us that some of them are pretty good, and possibly worthy of including. I'm just wondering what the appropriate way to do that is. Um, did anyone see any constraints that were listed that shouldn't be here? Is there something that should be eliminated from the report?
No.
I think that's a good question. I, I didn't.
So then, one thing we, we could possibly propose to do would be to add, um, in some of the ideas that we've discussed here. Do so in italics or in a different color, just, you know, highlight to the city council that these are, um, you know, sort of our last round of, uh, comments. And, you know, let them, consider them, uh, for inclusion or not.
Since the council meeting is next week, what's likely to happen is that the staff report that will go to them will have an attachment that includes, uh, potential edits for them to consider.
Okay.
And we would, uh, in the same way we've, well, probably in a little more, uh, formal way, what we've provided you with tonight in terms of the recommendation or the discussion that you've had at your previous meetings, we would restructure that into a series of, um, of edits for them to consider, uh, when they meet next week to talk about this. And we would ask for their, uh, authorization to make those edits after that meeting.
Okay. I think that's a fine way to approach it.
I just thought of something. I thought, two things. That's what I get for sitting here. Um, is there, can, can we work with East Bay Mud on a break for water meters to inclusionary housing? Water meters can be very expensive. I don't think there's a way we can diagonal it, but I just, it just came to me.
They're tough.
Yeah, I know. When you're looking at trying to reduce the cost of building inclusionary housing, when you're, you're talking that much for a water meter, it can be, because we can adjust the sewer connection fees as a city, but we cannot touch the water meter costs.
Right. The, the, East Bay Mud, P G N E, um, they, they have a different-
Yeah.
...perspective. It's not that they're opposed to affordable housing, but they just, they're, they're more focused on their rate pairs and trying to, to distribute the costs evenly across all the rate pairs. So they tend not to like to give out special exemptions.
That I just noticed, and it was a talk about, uh, the project up there, Safeway. For a couple of years, we had the, um, the old library site in as a potential housing site. Um, in fact, the school district even talked about building housing there.
That's true. That's true.
And I didn't see it in our-
Which site is this?
The old library on Solano.
The YMCA.
The old-
Oh, oh.
That's true.
That wasn't in our analysis. I don't believe it was in this last one.
No.
Could it be because it's owned by the school district?
I, I think that site was considered a couple of, like, four years ago when the, when the process initially started. I don't know. Jeff may know more about its history.
Yeah, it, it, the, the school district did an RFP. They selected a developer. They couldn't make the economics of a mixed-use project work out. They wanted to do administrative offices and maybe some instructional space. I don't remember exactly. And then have some, some housing that would be the, kind of the economics, the economic driver of the project. The superintendent at the time said it was our parking requirements that was the challenge for them. So they, they didn't pursue that. Um, the school district is now going through a facility master planning process that's pretty substantial. So, um, I can't recall whether this, that particular site has anything in the near term or not. I know Ocean View has some, Ocean View McGregor, um, the McGregor by the middle school has some, um, near-term proposals that the district's working on right now.
But interesting feedback, that it was our parking ordinance-
It was the parking, yeah.
-that caused them to not be, you know, the, the timing with the crash in the economy probably doomed it as well. I think, you know, rents came down and teachers could afford to live nearby.
Well, are there any other comments?
Opportunity sites, um, looked at several banks. Did you look at Bank of America? They, I think they own it. And I think it is in Albany. I think it's in, yeah, it's in Albany. Mm-hmm. And, uh, has that big parking lot there. Um, and I, you know, I don't know. It, the bank isn't, is pretty empty inside. I mean, I, they could, they could do their business in much, with a much smaller building these days. Uh huh, yeah.
Well, it's no different than the 7-Eleven site. I mean, that's got that parking lot in front.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, piggybacking on, does someone had also mentioned the Mechanics Bank previously? Maybe it, it makes sense to me that that bank is fairly entrenched in the community here and that, that it might not be as much a candidate as some of the other buildings that we're considering, that we're considering.
Well, we're not saying for it to go away. We're just saying for it to build on top of it.
Yeah.
Because of the large parking lot.
And that, and that could certainly work for the, the bank sites could certainly, you know, potentially be, uh, mixed-use investments. They own the properties, the banks own the properties, and they have the capital. They just, they just need to have the, they just need to have the desire.
They're not going to get turned down for a loan, is that?
I don't think so. They just need to have the desire to go ahead and do it. And then the alternative is, well, what do we do with the bank while we have a year of construction? So, um-
I agree.
That's a difficult thing for them to deal with, I think.
When we were talking about the banks before, uh, it, it sounded like the banks were identified because of, um, just reorganization of certain banks in the community because they're not doing as well. And in this case, I, I would question Mechanics Bank-
I agree.
...as being one of those.
Yeah.
One of, one of the things, I, are you done? I'm sorry.
I am done.
Okay. One of the things that I think that we also haven't discussed, and it just came to me because I was doing a project in Gresham, Oregon, and they actually had a minimum height. You had to have three stories on major streets.
Mm-hmm.
You couldn't build one or two stories.
Yeah, more form-based zoning.
Right. So it was, it was interesting that our project got killed because we didn't want to do three stories.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, a story commercial with two stories of residential over. So, I mean, there is a precedence for maybe setting a minimum height and minimum stories.
Yeah.
There is a precedent.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's nice that San Pablo should have a, a different character than Solano. And, and I would be an advocate for going even higher than what we're describing along San Pablo. It, it would be more connected with the, the cities that are on either side of it and some of the larger buildings that are continuing. So-
Next steps?
Yeah.
Yes, next steps. Should we?
I, I, I think it's, um, what I'm hearing tonight, I think, is that we have a lot of good ideas, um, and ideas for, um, adding, adding to the housing element. And we have a lot of ideas that I think we're kind of talking about the next housing element, which is just about to come. Um, so the, 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 the decision I think we've been asked to do tonight is to move, uh, move what Barry's done so far toward getting it into the HCD to get the reviews, the review started on our, on our, um, tardy, uh, housing element. And I, you know, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied that, uh, that Barry's done good work. Uh, staff has done good work on this and that, uh, it's a, it's a readable, comprehensive document. It shows that we've met, we have the opportunities to meet the, uh, regional housing analysis. And so I think, um, I think the thing to do, uh, is to, uh, is to move it forward to the council and, uh, and ask the council to get it to the place that really counts, which is the, the Housing Community Development Agency, and get, but get the comments back and keep the process moving, uh, expeditiously on this document. And then, at the same time, um, move on to the rest of the general plan and then revisit the housing element during that. And keep all of these thoughts in mind, these forward-looking thoughts in mind, uh, when we do the general plan. And, uh, and the next housing element. I don't know. That's my inclination, anyway.
And we had a discussion that, um, the comments received this evening, and, you know, I, we've received, you know, comments from the public, both written and orally. And I think they've been nicely collated by staff, that some of those be incorporated into, um, a possible list of edits for the council.
Yep.
Because I think we've generated some good ideas here this evening.
I like your description of a little bit more of a formal presentation of edits that, that could be presented to city council. Um, I think that makes a lot of sense as the next step. And then recommending that it move on from there.
It's almost like responding to sequel questions. You know, questions made and you respond, you're writing.
Well, with that in mind, is this a motion that we need to vote on?
I think that would be good. I think that would be good. We'd like to be able to report to the commission, I mean, to the council that the commission passed a motion to do, you know...
Has the full backing?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I think I'm prepared to move. I'm wondering, I'm wondering, though, if we, are there, would it be worth, or can we make a list of, make a list of edits or suggestions that we can pass on to council right now as part of the motion? Do we, you know, how do we sort out all of the things we've talked about tonight and winnow it down to a few things, or if any, that we think should be added to this housing element draft?
Well, I think the council's going to see our comments and either act or not act on them. For instance, the art committee, our art fees, they'll see that we talked about it, and they'll figure out there, they'll, they need to either move forward with it or kill it. So I think they're going to see a list of items from us to, to respond to and work on.
Okay.
Or should we go through everything we discussed and take a quick straw poll and say, yes, that should be included, or no, it shouldn't?
That's what I'm, that's, that's kind of what I'm asking. I don't know. I don't know if I'm, I'm not organize enough to cover them all.
There's going to be quite a few things, items to discuss.
So let me, and Barry can jump in and correct me if he, or Anne, disagree, but I think that a lot of the things you've talked about are reflected in this draft already, or in general, the second units, you've talked a lot about that as an example. We're going to, in this draft, we're, we're basically going to come back to you with, with some policy programs that are going to be related to second units. The one thing I heard that I don't think is in this draft at all, but I heard some support for, was the, the Boomerang funding program. And so maybe that would be something to incorporate into the motion that that should be added, because it's not in the draft now. But a lot of the other things, the, the adjusting the zoning, the second units, looking at parking, in, to some degree or another, maybe not as specific as you've given us tonight, but it, it's something that we envisioned bringing back to you in 2014.
Uh-huh.
Barry, do I have that right?
Yes, I, I think that's a good suggestion to add that. And the one thing I would also add is that the state is going to give us a lengthy and detailed comment letter, and we will have an opportunity for those things that don't make it into this draft that's being submitted out, to add things at that time in response to their comments. So we can both demonstrate that we're being responsive to their comments by potentially adding, for example, adding sites. At that point, if they say, you know, "We don't really like these banks because we don't think that they're viable sites," there's an opportunity for us to say, "Well, you know, maybe let's look at some of the other properties in, in the city that we've talked about at this meeting tonight," and offer those as potential alternative sites. So there's a little bit of, there's a benefit to having a little bit of flexibility with the edits that we'll need to make. And believe me, we will need to make edits to this when it comes back. I, I mean, I definitely think there's some things that we can offer to the council next week as proactive changes to make to this draft in response to the feedback that we've heard tonight.
Okay. All right.
And the one thing I would like to see addressed in the future, if you can, not in a formal way, but how have other cities, Oakland, Alameda, local jurisdictions have dealt with their, their waterfront versus housing? I know that Alameda's faced the same problems, and so has Oakland. And I also know that Oakland, the port owns some of the property, but then there's been some back and forth about housing down there. And so it would be interesting to see how other cities have handled the same problem we're faced with.
Okay.
You know, one thing about the manufactured homes, the pre-manufactured homes, that might be something that it would be worth educating the city council on, maybe giving them some good examples of pre-manufactured homes.
I think you had an excellent statement there. And I think that we'll do it ourselves, not necessarily, we'll provide that information to city council. This, this needs a change in the code. And we're going to make those code changes.
It's, it's one of those things where it could have a misperception, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Well, I move that we make a recommendation to the city council that they review the second draft of the housing element, the 2007 to 2014 housing element, and review with that the discussion and comments that were made by members of the public and members of the planning commission over the course of the last set of hearings that we've had on this, and then forward it to the state for their review and comment. And I would specifically recommend inclusion of a recommendation to incorporate redevelopment Boomerang funds in this housing element.
All right. I'm, I'm happy to second that.
Do we want to be a little bit more direct with the Boomerang money and say that we would propose that the city council use that money to rein, to invest into inclusionary housing, or transitional housing in the city of Albany, instead of just...
That's a good point of clarity. I'll accept that as an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. I agree. Yeah.
Can you just clarify the, focus it in on transitional housing? Is that what I heard?
Both inclusionary and transitional housing. That the money be, preference would be given to use that money for transitional and inclusionary housing. That's even a little bit better.
And transitional includes emergency housing?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Any further points?
Pardon?
I'm going to call for a vote.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries.
I think we have it. Okay.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay.
Yes, thank you very much.
Hanging in there's been great.
So our next meeting is scheduled for October 30th.
So that's, we're not going to have our, our regular meeting because, well, for a lot of reasons. So next Wednesday, you're, you're free, but October 30th will be a special meeting of the regular stuff, including UC Village and all that.
So will that be at 6:30?
We'll take a look at it. It may be a long night.
Yeah.
We're trying to get a lot of things caught up here.
It might be helpful to, to start it at 6:30. We have two residential study session applications, potentially the, the daycare facility at 1109 Washington may be coming back to you. So there's, there's at least three applications right there that warrant some discussion.
If, if we could get those study session really early, we might be able to provide feedback to them in time to make revisions before the commission meeting. Does that make that clear? In other words, if you got it to us, if we can get them now, we could respond, you could give the response to the person. They could possibly modify their designs or respond at, at the hearing. If, if they're ready, I mean...
Well, for the two that we have, I have two design review submittals. One is 850 Hillside, which you saw in July, and that applicant has made some revisions. That might be a little more straightforward. The other study session application is a house with a second-story addition, parking reduction, and variance because it's a trapezoidal-shaped lot. So there's no way for it to meet the setback requirements. It's a little more complicated.
Sounds interesting.
We do have those plans available to the public, so certainly we could probably send those to you.
They put inclusionary housing, and they can reduce the setback.
Yeah, second story and inclusionary unit.
All right.
Okay, with that, we...
Well, I'll be out of town. I'll miss the next meeting, so. I hope Nick will be here.
I will be here.
Go Bears.
Yeah. Yeah. Go far-away Bears.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Yeah, one of my contractors wanted to take me up to...